...a song called Moshin uh in order here.
Cody Rubilinski.
Present.
Dave Schmidt. Darren Olson is out sick tonight. Mark Rockner.
Present.
And I am present.
Uh please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh we'll have Pat read the version, try reading to me.
Tonight's virtue is service. Service is giving to others, making a difference in their lives. You consider their needs as important as your own. Be helpful without waiting to be asked. Do every job with excellence. When you act with a spirit of service, you can change the world. You are practicing service when you want to make a difference in the world. Look for opportunities to be of service to others. Do thoughtful things to help your family and friends. Work with enthusiasm. Don't wait to be asked when something needs doing. Do your part to care for the earth, recycle, reduce, reuse. Affirmation, I am a person of service. I have compassion for those who need help. I do my part to make a better world.
Great, thank you, Ben. Uh Terry's gonna read our guidelines tonight.
All right, with an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators, so that equitable teaching and learning results and high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics.
Thank you. I don't see any public comments, so I think I'm just gonna skip that section for the night. Unless there is someone, I don't think so, I'm not aware of anything, so.
Yes.
Um so we have Anita in tonight for our CWSA update, the floor is yours.
Thank you, good evening. Um all things are going well at CWSA. The students had their first showcase in November and had a nice turnout over, well, she thought over thirty-five people came through to see what was going on, so that's a good turnout. The next showcase will be in January. They had planned a field trip for the group to travel up to UW O'Clare to go to the observatory, and I forgot what the other place was, but then the observatory, one of the mi- the big lenses is out of wax, so that trip was careful. And now they're going to be rescheduling for in the springtime. And they kinda like that idea because now they can put the planetarium along with the observatory up there at the UW O'Clare. So they're looking forward to that. The project for November that led into December was the planning of a float for the Christmas parade. And uh so they had to plan it and build it, and then they had an ugly sweater contest and design and then make it happen. But I saw them all ready to go in the parade and they were all covered up, so no one's gonna see those sweaters that they created. But they had fun doing it. Excuse me. So as of right now, things are good and uh our staff is excited about what they're gonna do.
Thank you.
Any questions? Let you save your voice, I'm in the same room, so. Thank you.
Yep.
Um and then overarching results, twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah, I can uh, Mr. Johnson, if you wanna introduce Joe, uh Mr. Crombos.
This is Mr. Crombos.
His first appearance before the board.
Yeah, he is our business ed teacher and this year we had made a decision at the end of last year to transition concessions to a um uh a bit, run it like a business through one of our business ed classes and give students an opportunity to develop business skills. And so Mr. Crombos is here to talk about that, explain a little bit about it and answer any questions you might have. So turn it over to Mr. Crombos.
All right. So overall, you know, Mr. Johnson said that we're trying to run it like a business, so the biggest goal is to not um to be profitable. But my biggest overall goal of concessions is to provide opportunities for student-run organizations to grow and be successful through using the concessions as a fundraising vehicle. And with that being said, there are some things that I'm doing to limit costs for each event while still being able to run a profitable concession stand. Um and then some events are gonna raise more money than others and that allows for us to be able to offer more, so there's events where I don't do Rockies and there's events when I do do Rockies 'cause it's, some events just aren't gonna be as profitable. Um then as Mr. Johnson said, the concession program is being run and managed through the business management class and it is my goal in the future to enhance the concessions program by offering more management-based opportunities to students in business management through application and interview processes. And that would be a next year thing. I just need time to be able to build that and like truly know what my goal is. Um and then currently the formula that I use to determine payouts over the thirty-dollar minimum per worker is income for the event minus the cost of goods sold, and that is our profit. Sixty-five percent of the profit is then given to the group working the stand and thirty-five percent is kept for concessions to allow for the ability to purchase new items or equipment when things break or wear out. I know there's a concern about the popcorn machine. Mister Wilcox was able to clean it up for us and it's good to go for the rest of the year, but we will need one in the future. And lastly, if the sixty-five percent is higher than the thirty-dollar minimum per worker, then the group receives the sixty-five percent. And if not, then they receive the thirty dollars per worker.
Well, I think it's a good thing for our students, but has this been communicated with all of our coaches and youth programs?
What is your question?
The concessions, the fees, has this been communicated with all the coaches and youth programs? Cause there's gonna be a huge issue if it's not communicated with each program and youth program.
So for a youth program, what I'm doing, and I've talked to the people that have come forward, so uh Alyssa Wilhorn and Richie as well. And what I'm doing for them is simply doing uh cost of goods sold, so make sure that we have the money brought back in to replace the items that were sold. And then since the youth programs could go and they do their own concession stand and could do that more freely, I just give them whatever was left over from the uh cost of goods sold. So they have it better on their end because they're more able to go and just open up their own stand if they wanted to. So I'm trying to, you know, extend the olive branch there, so to speak, to work with them. And then I believe most of the coaches and most of the groups that are running the organizations um have been made aware of the sixty-five percent and overall um I've been talking to a lot of the groups and they're pretty happy with where their payouts are as compared to where they were in the past.
So if a sports program doesn't wanna take part in it, they don't have to.
Right. And that was actually a challenge with getting groups, student groups to participate. And so we opened it up to the community and I know the Lions Club has worked at a couple of events and so um you know, and that's been helpful as well.
And we in turn give it right back to the community, right?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that each coach and each program, whether it's youth, middle school, or high school, gets communicated that information, cause it's, it's, it won't look good if it's not communicated. So I just wanna address that that be communicated. Um any other questions for uh Mr. Crombos this evening?
And that is also something too that, you know, on the spreadsheet that goes out to everybody where they like sign up, cause we just send out the spreadsheet to all the groups that have worked in the past and say, and there's a box on there that says like, this is the formula that we're using, so it's on there, but I've also done a lot of, you know, anytime a group comes in and works, I talk to them about what the payout structure is and.
Thank you, any, any other questions for?
Yeah. So um are the organizations that use the concession stands, are they locked in to using what you provide? Or can they bring in their own items for sale?
Yep, good question, so what I do is um kinda where that formula is, so we actually use the Square app for retail, which is helping me quite a bit, cause it tells me, you know, where my inventory costs are, where cost of goods sold is. But essentially if they bring in outside goods, like they wanna do a bake sale or whatever and sell those items, like I have no problem with them doing that, I think whatever they can do to better their uh organization as a whole is what really matters at the end of the day.
Okay.
So like Lions last week brought in, yeah, thirty hamburgers that we pulled up.
Right, right.
And then would you?
I'm, I'm just thinking of when I did my chess concessions. I did pulled, pulled pork and I made nine, nine hundred dollars.
Right. Cause that, and that won't show up on the cost of goods sold either.
Right, I didn't even use your concessions, I didn't, you know, cause you're not in the right spot for me to use them.
Right.
You know, I have to do my own. You know, and, and I'm okay with it, but I'm just, you know, I'm questioning for, you know, I am, you know, I am involved with the softball program and stuff. And we were talking about, you know, cheaper items that could be sold where the profitability is higher.
So if you made the nine hundred dollars off your own stuff, then that would be yours to keep then?
Right.
Is that my understanding?
It was, it was, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Right.
Any other comments for?
Uh ju- uh so what organizations within the schools, is it just the high school organizations that are approached to work it? Or like if there's middle school, I mean, do middle school organizations get the chance to? Or I guess is that, is the youth athletic program, is that still kind of a separate deal? So is, would the youth program work?
I believe the availability to run the concession stand is open to everybody.
That's right.
It's open to the middle school as well.
Okay.
That, and we're talking specifically to one over at the new facility.
Yeah.
And the high school?
Yep, the one in the high school by the gym and then the one at the Nacoustah Athletic Complex.
But Mark, if you haven't gotten communicated, I mean, that's something we should send you, cause you're with the football.
Well, I think it just goes through John.
Oh, okay.
I mean, from a standpoint of the the stuff that goes on at the middle school, I think, yeah, I, I think I was aware of it, but it was, I mean, I'm not, as a, as a coach, I'm not really gonna be working in concession stands.
Have middle school people sign up? Middle school.
So it hasn't, because my understanding was that like youth sports was a part of that, so I was focusing on like high school organizations, the Lions, of course, um and youth sports. But if middle school groups wanna be included on that list, I have no problem with doing that because it helps me and it helps them as well.
I know, I know the chess club signed up for last year, but the volleyball team, he was to it. We were gonna do some of the softball games. That's okay.
Okay.
Any other follow-up questions?
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Um so I know Lynn isn't here tonight, she ha- uh would like each board member to put this on their nightstand and read it, I'll fall asleep. I do that tonight. Um but please take a look at that between now and the next week to get questions, please reach out to her. Um a lot of good stuff in there. Um and we have Brian Grill.
Night, Joe.
Thank you.
Uh we have Brian Grill tonight, our director of student services, communicating with the board.
I don't have a ton for ya. We're just plugging along, so, yeah. Right now we're plugging along.
We're trying to beat the snowstorm.
Yep, so.
Thank you, Brian.
And Alexa. We appreciate you being here and then school is closed obviously today, so we didn't require Alexa, our student.
But we do have her for, Keith's got a report.
Yep, she um had a short report, just simply uh student council is running a holiday food drive right now. It's going through um the end of the, you know, up until break on twelve twenty-two. Uh also, student council next week will be hosting a winter spirit week. And then Lynn Crew gave an appreciation gift to all staff members at the high school. And the next blood drive is March first from one to six P M. And all of our winter athletics are now up and running and moving along. And when we come back from break, musical practice will be starting, so.
What, what's the play this year? Do we know either?
The Little Mermaid.
The Little Mermaid.
Alright. Check it out.
My gosh.
And I believe uh Mr. Crombos, that was his athletic program update, correct?
Yeah.
Did we forget the two or?
Yeah, we kinda did.
Alright, so nothing more with communicating with the board tonight, we have um, do we wanna follow the agenda and do the policy governance quick or the therapy dog sense? We have that option too.
You can go in order, it's fine.
Okay.
I don't know my kids with me.
Uh so we're gonna jump into R two then, academic performance for policy governance. And uh Terry wants to read a short description of that for us.
Alright, so under R two, academic perform- performance and application, all students regardless of their race, gender, disability, and or socioeconomic status will be literate in reading, language, arts, and math. All students will be able to integrate and apply the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and competencies acquired across all disciplines.
So we had a, a pretty in-depth and good conversation with um each principal at each school. Uh some of the things I wanted to highlight was the high school and AMS. They went up in the rankings with ELA, which is, which is huge. Um and if each principal just wanted to highlight something, I know they're out here tonight. So if you wanna talk about your program for a minute or something you wanna celebrate or assess, feel free to go too, so.
I figured everybody in the room was at the meeting last week, maybe other than Elena, so I'm thinking.
Sure.
Well, maybe a focus, maybe what are, what are you working on with laser-like focus at?
I could speak to that um from the elementary standpoint. Really what we're working on uh at the elementary end is working and making sure that we have a guaranteed viable curriculum that is rigorous. And we have resources put into place that involves coaching and an educational consultant to make that happen. And with that, with our coaching right now, we're really focused on small group, uh reading instruction and developing each teacher's skill around uh creating that rigorous experience as we meet each kid where they're at.
Thank you.
Some highlights from, of areas of growth, as you had mentioned, we had some good growth in the ELA area particularly. And particularly air, on the state report card, one of the new areas is called target groups. In other words, the bottom quarter of how students are performing in some area. And we had a, we moved up a good fifteen percentile points relative to other schools in Wisconsin and working how we've been supporting our most vulnerable learners and that's been, there's been a bunch of works on a number of fronts, much of it also social-emotional, how do we help, especially at the middle school level, that is key, how do we help make, build character and how do we deal with trauma and those type of things and that, and we're seeing that help out in that area. A particular area of focus of improvement is one we're doing in joint together with the high school in having our, our faculty six, twelve work together as um basically to help get better at the process of gradual release of responsibility, helping build a culture of student engagement, finding ways to help students accept more responsibility and learn how to, and there's ways to do it, but especially working together. Um one particular focus this year, this particular year is both, we have, we have an instructional coach at both the middle school and the high school, they're both going through training in particularly in the area of literacy, and so we're adding areas, the high school's been doing this for, starting last year, but we're starting a dis- a literacy for all school te- for teachers in every discipline to be able to have a literacy focus. And that's one area that we're looking for growth in, but also particularly in being able to lead the process of how do we do it together and how do we support each other and have that as a whole school focus. And so that's our, it's sort of a joint focus between the two, but we've seen some great momentum building with that. Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with what Nathan said and then, and like Cody had mentioned, we had uh the growth score for English Language Arts at the high school across all, all subgroups. Um was fantastic to see and then focus area we're looking at um literacy, continuing literacy, the work with the middle school and then also uh math and looking at trying to get those scores up for, you know, for students with math. So that's.
Thank you, Brian. And like I said, we, we all had a pretty in-depth deep conversation, so I appreciate that.
And we're gonna bring it back again in March.
In March, okay.
For an update, so.
Oh, perfect, so at this time, I'll just look for a, a motion for R two.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, thank you, motion carried. Alright, now we're gonna go into our, we had a therapy dog discussion last Wednesday, um very informal, so anything you wanna, no, no dog today, but anything you wanna?
I wasn't sure if I could bring him, so I did wanna push my luck. Um otherwise he would definitely be here with me, but um I just am, I'm kinda back now that you guys have had a week to, to think about it, look through it, if you had any other questions for me or otherwise the application goes in the mail tomorrow.
Yeah, I think that you have our blessing, I just didn't know if uh, I know that we didn't go through a vote or anything, I was just, did you want something more from us or?
No. We just relieved, cause the policy's already there, so that's there, it's just more, we wanted to make you aware of it and we really wanted to share with you last week our communication plans
and the process that Rachel followed to go through this to see this was not a decision made in haste.
It's something that's been in the works for three years. And we have everything lined up with Lynn too that, hey, before, you know, Archer could start, it would be all the insurance and communication would occur, so that way if there are students that wish to act out, do, opt out due to allergy, things like that, all, we have a plan for all that. So we just didn't wanna just do it without informing you guys. So really what we're asking for is kinda just your blessing to say, yep, go ahead and move forward and you feel you have enough information that if you were asked questions by the community, you have what you need.
Um if, if we're asked questions by the community.
Yeah.
Can we refer them to you?
Send them to me, absolutely.
It would be the best.
Yes, please do.
You're, you're the expert at this.
Yeah.
Officially now.
No, absolutely.
And I, and I do remember Archer, the early years when I, when you'd bring him into the academy. He's come a ways, I would think.
I know, right?
Um, yeah, so.
Um and also I ran into um a school board member from Rapids, he was roughing one of our basketball games and he brought up that he heard I had, cause Darren was actually also roughing. So he found out that I had done the presentation from Darren and he said that Rapids currently has four in their district, they absolutely love it, they can't believe the success that they've seen from it. So if you guys also have questions or wanna hear more about something that's locally happening, um we're just getting in line with what other schools are doing and I did a little bit of a different route with mine and a few more classes, but I feel better about that for me personally, just because it is the first time in our district. But um, yeah, it.
One more cut, one more thought.
Yeah.
So, okay, so this is gonna start, this is, you know, we're giving, I'm giving you my blessing anyway. But um is, is this going to be a, like a work in progress as, it's gonna be tweaked as you go along?
Oh, a hundred percent, and he'll start very small, um a couple hours, maybe a couple days a week. And it, he would never do a full day. Um that's the convenience of where my house is located. It would at most be looking at three to four hours a day, two or three days a week. He is not meant to be and I would never push him to be.
Did, didn't you say something on last, last Wednesday, like it's like ten to twenty minutes tops at a?
For an individual session, like a timeframe of, yeah.
Like three or four of those per day?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yeah, and spreading him out a little bit, having him visible in the hallways between classes or having a teacher say, you know, hey, why don't you stop by, cause we're, we have a workday and he can just mingle amongst the kids and those things aren't part of what those small fifteen-minute individual check-ins would be. Um but, so he could be there for a few hours at a time and then, and then go, but.
And to that kinda follow-up, every January she'll have to resubmit her insurance, things like that, to Lynn. So every January, if you would like, we could put this just as an annual update to you guys to say, yep, here's how things are going. That's up to you, or if you just want it to be internal where Mr. Johnson, myself, and Rachel are evaluating to say, yep, let's continue another year. But she has to do, excuse me, vet checks and licensing and all the insurance things annually. So we, we've already talked about how are we gonna review its success on an annual basis.
And if you ever want more info, here's our, our last three years together in a nutshell.
Might I suggest that we use the update that I do with the board as some snapshots? So some pictures, some numbers, a number of kids?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it was, you wouldn't have to.
A yearly update on, I wouldn't call it a program, but if you wanna um showcase, you know, a showcase.
Yeah.
That'd be fun, yeah.
And then bring the dog.
Yeah, have him come in. He'll be all underneath everything to check it out the first time and then after about ten minutes, he'll just lay next to someone he's either comfortable with or feels like he can smell a lot of.
You didn't wanna say that.
I wasn't gonna allude to that.
You weren't going there, were you? Get more knees out.
I wasn't gonna allude to that, but.
Boy, you have to put his head up your lap there, you're in trouble.
He is pretty intuitive, that guy.
Perfect, well, I think you have uh all of our blessings to move forward and what you need to do and then
Awesome.
Um a yearly update for showcasing our student learning would be perfect for us, so.
Yeah.
Um I don't see anything for a vote, so we'll just give you that blessing, you guys can carry on and we'll jump into.
Thank you.
We'll jump into John Thomas and Josh Cole for emergency action.
Alright, so Officer Cole and I um have done one of our two annual unannounced uh safety assessment drills at all three of our buildings. Um on the second of December, we did one at Humke. Uh the Humke scenario we used is we go individual classroom by classroom. Uh we announce, hey, we're gonna practice emergency or lockdown drill, lockdown, and then the kids and the teachers respond with it. Um that one takes us about thirty minutes, we had um three hundred fifty students in that day and thirty staff members. Um the students were all able to uh fully do the drill, Officer Cole had gone in prior to do the training with them. Uh we also actually benefited, we had some guest teachers that day who were unaware of it, so we were able to work with them about how to use the uh safety features that we have at each of the buildings. So we did Humke, um we did AMS, at AMS and NHS, we do it a little bit differently. Um we make an announcement, uh an all, all call to the schools that there will be a practice lockdown drill uh to follow procedures. Uh on this, this one, typically what they do is just do the uh lockdown in the classroom. Uh so we went through um uh at AMS, uh all the doors that were closed and locked and students were in the classroom, um we checked each of them. The drill lasted, it's a short drill, fifteen minutes at the, the middle school. Um part of what we did during this time is to see if there's any issues or concerns that arise as it, out of it. Uh some of them that we had gone through the buildings in the summer, Officer Cole and myself, uh we noticed them as well. Uh speaker issues, um those we've worked with Eric Saylor in the I T department and either have resolved or have a plan for resolution for fixing any of those. Um with Heartland Company that will, they were just here the other day. Uh at the high school, we also did um an unannounced uh lockdown over the P A system. Uh that one only took about ten minutes, there was two hundred forty-nine kids and about forty-three staff members present that day. Um we noted the area of concerns, uh once again, uh the high school auditorium, uh some different communication ones with Eric Saylor, we've uh either resolved those issues or have a plan for resolution on those. So those were the three unannounced drills that we did. Um we'll, we will need signature from board member for approval for that first submission. Um along with that, uh Officer Cole and I this year wrote a grant for uh the DOJ Office of School Safety for eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand seventeen dollars for a mapping of all of our, our school buildings. So in case of emergency, oh two, emergency management services, they could utilize this to gain access. We're, we received the grant, uh we had the step one of the digital mapping done. Officer Cole and myself will go through, um approve the digital mapping and then we'll have the final, final map for all three of our buildings.
Awesome.
Which would be nice.
The, the only um recommendation is, I know some features, I don't even know what it's called, but the, that doorbar thing, when you close the door and it's the bottom of the door. Some of them struggle closing it or another, so if you ever swing into the classroom and just see if they need help using that.
Yep, we also have um, as part of what Officer Cole and I worked on this year, we've, we've gotten our buildings to a, a little bit different of a look that during the day, all uh interior doors are locked for that reason. Uh the, the extra one with the, the barricade lock that we have. Uh so we have um each month, we've gone and done an interior door check and an exterior door check at all three buildings. Uh but our last one, exterior doors, we didn't have any, any issues with it. Um as we've gone along, if we've noticed that there's an issue with the door, uh Steve Hirschberg for our buildings of ground has uh fixed all those, but it's just an added couple levels of security that it started this year.
Yeah.
I had a thought about those, cause those are the ones that slide on the bottom of the door and then pin the traps in the floor, right? Cause I, and I, I remember being in one of the rooms when one of those drills happened and we had to open the door to put that thing on. And I guess. And I guess I thought that was kind of odd. Is there a way they could stay, like slid underneath the bottom of the door and just open and close with the door? And then if you needed to put them on, you just slide it over and drop the pin in?
Uh, no, those can't stay under the door, but, uh, the reason we got those initially was i- in a, some of the doors are open. You know, we, we had a very open door setup on it. Um, new to it now is since we do have the doors locked, there isn't as much of a need to do it. If someone wants it as an added security, because when you put those things in, there, there's no getting it.
Yeah, and Josh, correct me if I'm wrong, I remember part of the reason we looked at it to only have the hole, even if they wanted to like reverse it and just put the pin in the ground to, as another, that was an okay thing too, right?
Yeah, so you can't leave them on the door cuz it's fire code violation. Uh, our fire code notes that we have them when they do an inspection, but as long as they're not on to being used for any other time, they're, they were fine with it.
Okay.
Um, as you look at, uh, unfortunately we have to look every year, they're updating our, you know, active killer things that happen in school, which is unfortunate, but, um, something that they're learning is, you know, is the, uh, you know, somebody comes off the product, hey, look at these door barricades. But what they're discovering is, you know, through all the many years of these unfortunate events, that a locked door is typically good enough unless they're specifically trying to get into that room, that if the door's locked, they bypass because they're just trying to hurt as many people as they can as fast. So really the locked door is the, the best thing we could do for safety and that's why we went this year to like making sure all, outside doors are locked. When they have kids in the classroom, we're, we're still working on teachers keeping their doors locked while they're in session because that can save, save lives, um, just by having that door locked, cuz they'll bypass and cuz they're just trying to do as fast as they can and before we get there.
Sure. Well, uh, could, I could work on the grant and, uh, if there's nothing more, I'll just look for a motion then to push this forward.
Did you get through everything?
Oh, yeah, I didn't mean to.
Well, and I just, I wanted to just, I, so just, uh, Josh and I have talked and I know John has some experience or heard about what some of the work that Wisconsin Rapids has done through a recent referendum. And that is certainly something Josh and John continue to have conversations with us about. And that is something that we're gonna be talking about more. I mean, what would it take and certainly if you guys wanna share a little bit more about
We're talking about the entrance?
The vulnerability right now with our entrances, that would just plant a seed with the board and so that they're up to speed on some of our conversations.
So as, as we look at it in our current buildings, as Mr. Whitmore referenced, uh, Wisconsin Rapids in their latest referendum changed all their access to their buildings. Uh, currently our setup at all three of the schools is, is different. Uh, but if you are buzzed in through the door, then you're into the school. Um, as far as the safety and security, uh, the ones that are going now are, you're buzzed in, but then you are buzzed into directly the office. You, if you're coming through the front door, you can't get to the school without going to the office. Um, in our three buildings, like I said, each one has a different setup of what that would take to to set something like that, uh, at A M S. Probably be the easiest one, yeah, A, A M S is, would, would be part of, they'd have to be part of construction and changing what the current office looks like. Um, the high school has set back across their hallway. The elementary school has the two double doors that come in in the office to the left, so it's not, it's not a simple, like just put this in, it'll work, but as far as down the road, uh, an area of, of safety would always be directing public through the office, not access to the school. We also have instituted identikit this year. Um, in very forms, we're, we're gonna get this full-blown, but it's a background check, um, for visitors in the building. And anybody that's walking around the building has badging with their picture on it and has passed this background check.
Okay. Yeah, I could see why I would have to go to R referendum, cuz that'd probably be a.
The high school, I think it'd be the toughest, yeah.
Darren, he hasn't moved to high school office, back to the old.
Yeah, switch it up, go back to what we had, the seventies.
That is true, yeah, yeah.
I, it, not related to that, but I do wanna make a comment on, I really, I, I like the new traffic patterns like that
at the high school.
At the high school and at the middle school for like the drop-off. I don't know if everybody's following it, but like that, getting everybody on it. Because there were times like where we're used to drop kids off and in that front parking lot and people would be terrified. And I was always amazed that nobody got hit there. So I really like that drop-off, that from a safety standpoint, the side drop-off at A M S. I haven't been to Humke, but Humke's got the loop there and I don't think, you know, that, that never seemed to be as much of an issue there, but.
Yeah, at the middle school, it's, it's becoming practice, uh, you know, in the first, first part of years, it's always directing people. Uh, usually we're staying out there, but that, pretty, pretty smooth flowing now, they come along those sides, that side entrance and leaves the buses open for the kids in the morning and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like it.
Thanks for sharing that.
Thank you. We'll just push for our motion then to get that approved.
So moved.
Okay, Mark, you got the motion, you got the second.
Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you, thank you guys for coming in. Uh, next agenda item, uh, wrestling coach position. I know we talked about this last week, uh, good presentation. There were some board updates from Paul Hun and recommendations. Um, and Terry, did you wanna share that there had to be a minimum of eight girls or something?
Well, we, uh, when we left last week, it was, we were talking about doing an assistant. And then, um, and I, I, I sent you a board update, uh, where, uh, after Paul had considered and talked to, uh, Coach Thurber and had further conversations, it makes sense to have, uh, had basketball, had, had boys, had girls. And then if the, and then keep the assistant, but if those numbers were to drop below a full team of girls, um, drop down to an assistant.
What's the definition of a full team?
Uh, eight or more. So it would be eight and there's.
Cuz there's like, isn't there like twelve?
Twelve is, uh, twelve is the max, so eight would be a, a full team.
So here, I'm gonna just read the text I got from Paul.
Okay.
So Pop, Paul says if we have eight, it is considered a complete team. They will compete as a complete team multiple times this season, as long as we have eight. If and when that number drops below a full team, then we would have to discuss moving to an assistant females coach. But I think with, with the numbers on the rise.
And I did get an update that the girls took fourth out of seventeen teams at a tournament.
Yeah, I, I ordered that on, I think.
That was pretty cool, so, um, if there's not any further discussions, I'm just gonna look for a motion on this. I think it's great, um, to continue to add and improve our athletics, so definitely, definitely nice to see, so.
So the motion would be a, uh, a girl's head coach.
That's what it's listed as, an additional wrestling coach.
So I'll just, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, woman's, uh, head wrestling coach position.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, motion carried. And we do have, uh, one more approval tonight for, uh, administrative contract renewals. I know we talked for a good fifteen, twenty minutes.
So it's presented last week.
Uh, last week. Um, I think we all, we're all in agreeance of that, so I'm gonna look for a motion to, to approve.
So moved.
Second.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Um, consent agenda resignations, Natasha Endel, first grade, special education teacher. Looks like she's gonna resign, um, the first, uh, January twentieth, twenty twenty-three, along with Kimmy Potter, our Hocky Elementary School Teacher Assistant.
So Johnny, wanna talk a little bit about that?
Sure, you know, um, one of the things I thought about right away is, uh, her time with us and Renno Bryan would agree, so she's a special education teacher, it hasn't been long enough. And Natasha's been a, going back to our virtue of service, a great service to our kids throughout her time here. She actually came from us through private industry, uh, Maricor member, get, Maricor member volunteer, guest teacher, special education teacher over the last five years or so, so we're, we appreciate her, we're gonna miss her. Kimmy is actually, you know, resigned and has been subbing in our district right now, so this is just a formality. She just wanted to step down in her role and her capacity and what she's doing right now.
Sure.
Why is?
Oh, yeah, why now? Brian, why don't you answer that?
Well, Natasha shared, so her husband's job moved to the old class area, so she's going cuz his job required a lot of travel previously, so he found a new position. And this actually allows them, cuz they're a newlywed couple, this actually allows them to spend time together and see each other, so I can't blame her for that, but, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, him, like John said, she has been a huge asset, has been a huge learner and our families, I know, are already sad to be seeing her going, even though it's not her time yet, so I can't thank her enough for everything she's done for Natasha.
Well, go ahead.
Well, Kim, so you, what you're saying, John, is Kimmy's still working with the district as, as a sub?
As a guest teacher, she's, we, we have a contracted service called Teachers on Call.
Okay.
So essentially she's taken her employment and she's working for them and we hire her.
I got it, I.
She's still in the, she's still in the building, but she's not in her previous role.
Right, okay.
But she'll be at A M S from time to time too, and, you know, she basically just spread further around.
Sure.
Okay.
Well, thank you Natasha and Kimmy for your time at, um, the district. And then employment, Logan O'Donnell, computer technician. Uh, Liz Boudreaux, JV girls basketball coach. Adam Camberley, JV boys basketball coach. And Brooke Thurber, uh, head women's wrestling coach. Congratulations to those coming into the district, um, the hires there. And I'm gonna have, uh, Mark take Darren's spot tonight and move the donations for me.
Alright, so we have donations, forty dollars from the First State Bank for fourth grade needs. A thousand dollars from the, the, uh, from the Town of Rome Fire Department Fund for families helping families. And many, well, many winter coats were donated by the Rome Auxiliary Legion or American Legion Auxiliary, excuse me. And then hats and gloves donated, they, donated by Phi Beta Kappa. Phi Beta Kappa donating hats, I thought that was kinda funny.
Hey, hey, what's, uh, what's wrong with this one out of V W?
Was that out of Stevens Point, I don't know.
Alright, look at that.
I, that would be my guess.
Sure.
And then backpack for kids at ninety dollars from Bethlehem with, Bethlehem Women in Missions. I will try to get my speaking, maybe I need to come back to school and get some speaking lessons.
I'm gonna have the dog visit him.
Well, we'll see who he picks next time we're here. Uh, fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents from Rome Homemakers. And fifty dollars from Club Fifty-One Home and Community Education. And then paper was donated by Bob Sheer.
Alright, thank you for our donors this month and thank you, Mark, for reading us. Now those donations are greatly appreciated, uh, minutes, uh, we had a regular board meeting last month on the ninth. Uh, we had our board workshop this month on the seventh. Uh, right now I'm just gonna call for a motion for consent agenda as presented.
So moved, second.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, thank you. Uh, feature agenda items, January fourth is our next board workshop, uh, six P M here.
And I might add, I'll be sharing information with you on this. So our teachers are going to be coming before the board for the first linkage, you know, I've been sharing with you.
Okay.
We're trying to work out this linkage, so they're gonna be, they're doing some survey work with the teachers around, um, what policy is it?
Uh, G P nine, or O eleven structural program.
Yeah, but that's not the one, but anyway, I'll, I'll get that information shared with you. So you have your first linkage, we're trying it out.
Um, and then, uh, the eleventh will be our board meeting at six thirty here, so at this time, I'm just gonna look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion carried, thanks for listening to my.
Well, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
And don't forget your, um, reading materials. Your little pamphlet, Mark.
Oh, I won't forget it, I'll be back.
Sorry.
I need some.